Okay.
One minute.
About thirty seconds.
Yeah, so that's probably.
They already have your gamble in the press.
One.
On his side, so you can follow it.
Appreciate what I'm doing. All right, just a few seconds left. Let's get ready to govern. All right, it was upset. I'll now call to order this meeting of the City of White House Council for today, May the twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-five. It is six P M. Ms. Nichols, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. James Dwansley.
Here.
Zach Briscoe. Brad Salburns.
Here.
John Chambers.
Here.
Michael Low.
Here.
Matt Lazarine.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. If you please stand if you're able and join Councilman Lazarine if he leads us in a word of prayer.
Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us together today. Thank you for having this group that comes together to do the city's business and make our community stronger. Dear Lord, watch out over all of us, our community, our, our country, and keep us safe. Jesus' name, pray, amen.
Amen. Please join the council in the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
That sounds fantastic. Please be seated. All right, that takes us to item D, Presentations. We are starting with a proclamation for motorcycle awareness for two thousand and twenty-five. Bear with me, I will read the proclamation. Whereas motorcycles are energy-efficient vehicles that are increasingly used as a mode of transportation in the United States due to the increased need to conserve fuel, reduce urban traffic, lessen parking congestion, and tread lightly on the overworked road system. And whereas motorcycles continue to be an important and economical mode of transportation involving such activities as commuting, touring, and recreation. And whereas motorcycling promotes tourism and friendship by attracting riders through various clubs and organizations from all over the world. And whereas motorcycles lack the protective armor of automobiles and trucks, which ultimately increase the chance of serious injury and death to the operator. All motorists need to be aware and utilize caution around motorcyclists. And whereas due to the increased number of motorcycles on the road, it is appropriate to set aside a time to promote motorcycle awareness, safety, and respect to all vehicle operators. And now therefore I, James Dwansley, Mayor of the City of White House, do hereby proclaim that the month of May, two thousand and twenty-five, be motorcycle awareness month, and that all citizens to join in a concerted effort in order to promote awareness, mutual respect, and safety on our roads. And witness whereof, I have here on two, set my hand and cause the seal of the city of White House to be affixed on this twenty-seventh day of May, two thousand and twenty-five. All right, Mr. Hine, would you like to come up and say a couple of words on motorcycle awareness, please? Just say your name and address for the record and.
My name is David Hine. I go by first ship where I, uh, I ride with the Zelts Motorcycle Club. It's also a Christian ministry here too. I just want to share and say thank you to the City of White House, to the committee, and everybody to being able to promote this. So where people can know motorcycle awareness. Yeah, we can put signs out all day long and let everybody know, but at the end of the day, we're all about, you know, we just need to just watch out. One thing I notice is before I started riding, you always look for a car. And sometimes people don't look for a motorcycle and were trained on it. And so, yeah, so I appreciate James and the crew and this.
David, if you don't mind, it's not only looking, but it's listening. When you hear the pipes, it's like an ambulance. If you don't move, you don't turn, you allow the pipes to disappear out of hearing sight, and then you can meet the vehicle. The pipes are, uh, they're there for a reason so that you can hear them. So it's not only your sight, your senses, you use your hearing as well as driving. So don't not to fail to mention that. It's also look twice, save a life, look and listen as well. Thank you, David, very much. Yes, sir.
All right, council, would you join me down here for, we have a population here presenting you and your club. Thank you for all the work that you're doing with safety and awareness. You know, I never appreciated Harley's for what they were until this type of thing, you can hear them. You know when somebody in a Harley's behind the side. And, uh, we actually do an event at the, I try to promote it, but in September and October, we'll do an event at the, the Marine every year. Everybody say cheese.
God bless you all. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it. See you next year.
All right, council, that's one of five photos tonight. Keep your smiles ready. All right, now we have an introduction, a presentation, uh, D two. We have an introduction of a new Neighborhood Services Officer, Shelby Gross, Chief Robeser.
Mayor and council, a few months ago, our city made a little bit of structural change and recreated this new Neighborhood Services Officer position. Uh, this position responds to situations with our community that related to COVID complaints and ALP complaints. Uh, after some extensive interviews, Shelby was selected as our new Neighborhood Services Officer. And although she may be new to the position, she's actually not new to the city. She was hired in September of two thousand and twenty-two, where she worked as a customer service representative next door. Since then, she's learned a lot about our city operations, and this has proven to be beneficial in her transitioning to our department. She has already been receiving a sense of training in codes and ordinances, and there is much more training planned. She's getting overwhelmed.
Not yet.
Not yet. Um, but we're learning a lot about the laws and ordinances, so there's a whole lot there for her to learn. We're excited that we're going to be able to show off all of her work in providing her first, uh, departmental report will be in this next June meeting. So we'll have that, that data for you. So we're going to bring her forward and jump, meet her, introduce her, and we'll be welcoming her to the Neighborhood Services Officer position.
Thank you. Did I get your last name right?
Gross.
Gross, okay, awesome. I'm sorry, that was a gamble. I just read it. It's great to meet you. Welcome, welcome to the team.
Thank you so much.
All right, that takes us down to item E, Community Interest. Uh, Mrs. Black.
Uh, Mayor and council, as you can all see on your way here, one oh nine East Main continues our renovations on our city center project. We are hopeful that that project will be wrapping up sometime in August, but we'll keep you posted as we get a little bit closer. And Erin Martinez and I who meet with Kath on our Shagan Park concept plan late last week and went over some ideas and thoughts that they have. And so we hope to be bringing you their, um, their draft of that final concept in your June meeting. So we look forward to sharing more information as we get that. I think in our second round of surveys, we had almost two hundred responses. So great turnout and great feedback, um, as well as all the feedback that we received.
About two hundred elementary school responses.
Elementary school responses at Career Day. So a lot of feedback on what everybody would like to see in that park. So we're really excited to continue work on that project.
A treehouse and a castle and, yeah, lots of stuff. All right, anything from council on the subject of community interest?
Maybe next year on Veterans Day, we could, as a city, lay a wreath at the.
Memorial Day?
Yeah. Just an idea.
Okay. So, uh, graduation happened in White House. That's always a huge event. Want to thank our emergency services for being there to help facilitate all that and, and keep traffic moving and flowing. So thanks for that. Appreciate it. Speaking of which, anything else in the matter of community ser- community interest? All right, hearing none, that takes us down to the consent agenda. We have five items on the consent agenda. Number one is discussion, consideration, and action on the engagement letter from Gollum Morgan Petty for audit services. Two is discussion, consideration, and action on approving interlocal agreement with Smith County Sheriff's Office for jail services. Three is discussion, consideration, and action on approving interlocal agreement with Smith County for emergency and non-emergency law enforcement dispatch services. Four is discussion, consideration, and action on surplus property. And five is approval of the minutes of the city council meeting on April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, May thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-five. So two of those. So if there's, if, if no one on council wishes to move these onto the regular agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to move items two and three off the consent agenda, onto the regular agenda.
I'll second your motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll, we'll consider those two items separately. So now your consent agenda consists of, uh, items number one, items number four, and items number five. Entertain a motion to approve them as presented, or somebody can move another one off.
I'd make a motion to approve those as presented for items one, four, and five.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right. Um, so the place of those items that are moved off on the agenda, does that come down to me? I choose where those go, or they typically go to the end?
Typically, you would just do them next.
Okay, we'll do them next then. So we are going to go with, uh, item number two, discussion, consideration, and action on approving interlocal agreement with Smith County Sheriff's Office for jail services.
So Mayor, due to a conflict, I'm going to abstain from both two and three, so I'm going to step out.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, we'll come and get you whenever, whenever we pass those. All right, so that takes us to, uh, discussion, consideration, and action on approving interlocal agreement with Smith County Sheriff's Office for jail services. Any discussion from council? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between Smith County and the City of White House for jail services.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, with that, the motion carries. So it takes us to number three, discussion, consideration, and action on approving an interlocal agreement with Smith County for emergency and non-emergency law enforcement dispatch services. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with Smith County for emergency and non-emergency law enforcement dispatch services.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, that one passes. Can we get, you could grab him real quick? That hollow corridor, you could probably just whisper his name. All right, you'll have to watch the video, Matt, to see how those went. That takes us down to, uh, item G on the agenda, other action items, ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings. Number one is discussion, consideration, and action on resident concerns of one of seven Dewes Drive, uh, and the entirety of Dewes Drive related to stormwater, wastewater, and streets. I know we have several people here signed up to speak on that. Um, so we can start the discussion. You guys can come up and speak, uh, ahead of time if you would like, or you could just hear our discussion and then, and then come up and follow up. So whatever you'd like to do. Mr. DeMarcus Hawkins, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please. Even though it's actually in the agenda item.
Uh, DeMarcus Hawkins. I live at one oh seven Dewes Drive, White House, Texas.
Yes, sir.
Zip code seven oh seven nine one.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Uh, once again, I'm back again. Concerning the flooding and as well as sewage backup. April sixteen, I came home from work. I walked in the house and it had a foul odor of raw sewage. And when I looked outside, my back patio, sewage was bubbing up from the pipes and raw feces that was also around the little area where they built the sewage thing coming out. And, uh, like I said, I had pictures and video of sawing it, of raw sewage throughout my whole yard. And I asked city manager, uh, what about cleaning that up? And what was told to me that that was a private matter, but that is a pipe from the city, and it was city sewage that was dumped throughout my whole backyard. There is no kind of, uh, flaps needed to be put in there to, like, if it fills up with grease trap, when it fills up, there's nothing to stop it and prevent it from coming into my home. We also, uh, in the lift station that is at the head of the street, I asked the sir, I asked the gentleman, uh, what chemicals do you put in and how often do the city treats it? Uh, I never got a response on what type of chemicals the city used or how often the city treats the problem. So my concern is, since the pipe is a city pipe that runs underneath the house, why was I responsible for cleaning up the mess that the city, when it overflowed into my whole backyard? Not only just I have a flooding problem, now I have a sewer problem because I am the lowest house on the street. And everything comes from the apartments or whatever around area comes to the lowest point, and I'm at the lowest point. And once again, I'm the one that's getting affected. So I was asking, is that a city problem or like y'all always tell me, it's a private matter? That's why I see the council.
Okay. Is there a specific statute that cites this as a, a city matter? I know for water, if it gets past the meter.
Right, similar on a sewer issue, if it's, once it's past the tap, it's a private issue. But the difference is water meters have backflow preventers that prevent things from going back up in a sewer line. Sewers do not have that because of the nature of what has to go through a sewer pipe. Um, unfortunately, uh, under the Texas Sort Claims Act, cities are not liable for damage that is caused by sewage backup onto private property. We're prohibited from doing work on private property with public taxpayer dollars. Uh, this is not the only instance in town that this has happened. Even here recently, we did have sewage backup into a home as well. Um, and so unfortunately, our hands are tied on how much work we can do on private property when it comes to, um, both, uh, stormwater and wastewater and even streaming water.
So is that, that came through the toilet into that house, like back up through the toilet?
Uh, or bathtub.
Or bathtub, right. So what, what you experienced, there's a, there's a cap that's on a pipe, right, and that cap came off? Is that what happened?
So it's going to be a cleanout on a private service line. So the line that comes into your house off the sewer main, there's usually, hopefully, there's a cap right outside and that's a cleanout. And so I believe what happened is when that sewer main backed up, that cap worked effectively to keep that sewage coming out in the yard. It's not.
Instead of going in the house.
Instead of going into the house. So, um, I completely understand Mr. Hawkins' frustration and, you know, um, unfortunately, it was a grease backup on that sewer main that led to that. We have, uh, T J Henderson, our public works director, has begun starting using some degreaser in some of our spots that are prone to back up to that, um, as well as adding some microorganisms to our sewer system in those mains to help break that down a little bit faster. But unfortunately, that is, that is about the extent of what we can do in that situation.
And we've done this near his house already?
Yeah, where developers choose to put those taps. Like mine is right by my front door. I wish it was in my yard. I don't know why they put them so close to the house. I don't want stuff coming out right there. That'd be in the, that'd be in the same situation.
What you call a tap is the cleanout.
No, no, a tap is what, so you have our, our sewer main that runs along the roadway usually, right? And then there's a connection to that main that goes to your home. So the connection from the main to your service line is the tap. That's where you're tapping into that main, but there's a cleanout usually closer to your home.
Right.
So that if you have some sort of blockage between your home and the tap, they can easily run things to help clear.
It's like a screw-off lid.
Got one. I got one in my house.
And your lid came off? Is that what happened?
Oh, it's not even, I don't even think it's a lid on it.
Oh.
May not be. Sometimes they.
Yeah.
And like I say, I would just, uh, because I got the video, it was just, like, just bubbling up, it was coming. Filled the whole yard and then, like I say, I didn't understand since it is a city pipe, why am I required to disinfect my yard? Because like I said, I have pets, I have racquets, and that is a health hazard.
Right.
Raw sewage, feces, that's, that's, health-wise, that's, that's, that's. It's made of raw.
Yeah.
But if we can't legally do it, we can't legally do it.
But it's legally your pipe.
Well, again, the, the matter at hand has determined that it's not.
I mean, I still haven't seen any paperwork stating that.
Okay.
And also, uh, I asked for, uh, because last time I came to the city council meeting, it was said that, uh, everyone on the street didn't want any upgrades. I still haven't received that information yet.
I don't mean to intrude in your personal life, but have you contacted a rotor ruder or a plumber to get the thing cleaned out on your property?
It's not on my property. It's, it's from the city bagging up.
Yeah, I think it was just.
It was a main that backed up. There's no doubt it, the main backed up in the city.
Before we was putting on, put on the city sewer system, we had our own separate tanks, and we had people come out and service it.
Right.
Once it got filled up. But since we're now on the City of White House sewer line, I didn't believe I had to go and get, hire somebody to clean the City of White House sewer line.
As far as, uh, the other residents in your neighborhood, have you spoke with them about the drainage issue?
Yes, they're, they're here right now.
Yeah, and that's, this, uh, so this agenda item is, is structured in such a way that we can discuss all of it today. So it talks about, uh, the, the entirety of Dewes Drive related to stormwater, wastewater, and streets.
Yes.
So I'm glad, I'm glad you brought your neighbors out.
Yes.
I would love to have.
I got everybody here that.
A conversation with everybody.
So we can, let's, let's, let's get something going.
Is it, is this everyone on the street that's here or?
Pretty much, uh, yes. Yes, pretty much.
Anybody not here would be outvoted, wouldn't it?
I have, uh, the gentleman, uh, Mr. Wright, that owns the property behind me.
Okay.
He's here as well, so.
So, so what we're, what we're talking about today is everything, including widening that road to make it a proper width to get service vehicles down there. Maybe you can parallel park and still somebody could make it down that road. Curb and gutter so that you don't have to worry about that ditch, you know, being the only thing keeping water from coming across the road onto your property. But I think, I think even with that, you'll still have the drainage coming in from the backside.
Backside, yes.
So, uh, I think it'll help, like, and it'll definitely bring that street up to where it needs to be.
Yes.
You know, uh, if we can get buy-in from the property owners, whichever, whichever side we decide, or the contractor decides would be the best to take property from so that we can widen, widen that road and put those curbs and gutters in, I think it'll make that road look really nice.
It would.
And the city would bear the cost, right there.
Yeah, yeah, we put in, we, uh, so we, we, so we would contract the work and, so how would that, how would that work?
So the way it's worked in the past and some other most recent neighborhoods where this has been done, where streets were similar in size, did not have curb and gutter, um, the city paid a portion, but the homeowners along the roadway also paid a portion of the construction cost per curb and gutter through what's called a special assessment. So it's due at the same time that your property taxes are due every year, and it's a per rad a share based probably on the linear feet of street width that you have along the front of your lot. And so, um, what that ratio is, is up to the council. So if you want to do, how you want to split that out with the property owners along that roadway is entirely up to the council and the property owners. Um, so that is some, it's called a special assessment. That's something you could consider if you wanted to. So those are some things that we could, we could look at.
Do we know in those situations what the special assessment averaged?
Uh, I'd have to go back and pull it. I don't know off the top of my head.
It's gotta be, Ms. Black, it's gotta be a thousand, minimum.
Uh, pro, oh, yeah, I'm sure, so.
You know.
And it, it, because it's paid out over about ten years.
Okay.
So there's a term for them to make those payments annually, um, to help pay off the cost of that construction.
And there's, and if you don't pay it back, there is a.
A lien usually.
A lien on the property.
Can I ask you this? Uh, did, uh, the residents on Rainbow Drive, do they have to pay any kind of lane or, uh, any kind of taxes on getting their street improved by the city?
They did. They had a special assessment that I, like I was just talking about.
Can I also see there?
Yeah, when they put in Accertap, I think we paid the full amount, which isn't something we do. I don't think we do that anymore.
Well, see, they had a grant at that time to fix our street, but they used them funds to fix another street.
Will you say that you mean the previous council?
Yes, previous, before some, some of you guys. Yes, they had the funds to fix it, but they chose to move and do, fix Rainbow Drive instead of Dewes Drive.
Ms. Black, how, 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 the grant that he was speaking of, how, how did someone decide what street it was going to be used for?
This is the first I've heard about a grant for roadway work.
I think it was, so if you're talking about like twenty seventeen, around then?
Yes, uh, I'll, he can, he can elaborate a little bit more on exactly when, because I wasn't living there at the time. He can go a little bit more in depth than I can. But I know for a fact, there was a grant to fix our streets, and they moved it and, and used to fix Rainbow Drive.
I think, I mean, there were funds in place to do it. There were capital funds in place, but I don't think it was a grant. I think there were city funds.
Exactly, but I know they had, they had the funding to do that.
Right.
But you understand, and I hope everybody understands, if, if I understand correctly, the, the curb and gutters, it will not fix the problem.
No, it's not going to fix the problem.
But it's going to make it look better.
It's going to look better, and plus, like I say, I, I gave you my example of fixing problems. All it need is a drain, a fresh drain. And either you could run it across the yard. I don't know how, how it's done.
Have you, have you, just curious, sir, have you priced a French drain yourself?
Well, I have, I have an engineer on my, my neighbor's city is an engineer, and he can elaborate on that as well.
So the, in twenty seventeen, I was new to council. I'd just started council. And, uh, this issue was one of the first things I experienced on council.
This been going on since nine, ninety-eight.
And we were doing, we, we were doing roads projects, like you said, and what, what shut it down was the apprehension of the property owners to not want to give up property for the right of way. It's my recollection.
Okay.
And we also went into negotiation for the homeowner, where, where you live now. And we offered them what was kind of above a fair market price for the home.
Yeah.
And that wasn't taken either. So it's just no problems were solved. It was just the same.
Yeah, because my mom, she was, she wanted to sell, but she didn't want to leave a problem for the rest of our family.
Right.
The mosquitoes and, and she didn't want to just leave a hole there.
Right.
So that's why she didn't sell, you know, I was sold, but.
When the city owns the hole, it's pretty nice. We may get a pretty nice hole, like.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, but still, the water will still be there, and you're still going to have insect problems. I didn't know if talking, but I, like I said, I have neighbors, relatives.
Okay.
Maybe they want to say anything.
Mayor, just one more thing. We did do an overlay on Dewes Drive in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, right after our first county year. So it wasn't a complete street repair or replacement, but we did, we did work with caps, cap.
That was the compromise, was digging that ditch, doing the overlay, but no expansion, no gutters. It was just that.
Fixing what was there.
Right, trying to, trying to make do what was there.
What would be the purpose of the curb and gutter? What is the purpose?
So we won't have to worry.
On every street, every residence in the City of White House, don't they have?
It's not every street.
No.
On every street?
Memory Lane doesn't have any. Yeah.
Okay, well, I just.
It's probably about.
I'd like to have curb and gutter.
All the new ones do, like the ones that we put in, they, uh.
So we require the developers now to put them in as a part of their construction costs.
So the old, the old city, like Center Avenue and Memory and those, you know, the ones that come right off. And Dewes Drive, Dewes Drive is a really old historic street in White House, yeah. So all the ones that existed, and like I said, Accertap didn't have it until, I think it was nineteen ninety-eight or something like that. And then they built the new high school, and that became the thoroughfare for the high school. We're like, thanks, now curb and gutters.
So, so even if we get all your neighbors to agree to this idea, and we get an engineer to come up with curb and gutters, and y'all are willing to bear part of the cost at whatever ratio is decided, you're still going to have a water problem in the back that we're not going to address. So what are you going to do for that?
Well, like, uh, uh, Mr. Wright and I will have to get together and talk on that. Because like I say, when it rains hard, it's, it's filled up, bam, the backyard is filled.
So if a hundred percent of the water, how much of the percentage you say is due to coming in the backyard versus from the front? Sixty percent, seventy percent?
I really, uh, since y'all deepened the, the ditch a little bit, it has helped, but we still have water that comes across the street. But I can't just give you a ratio of how much, because like I say, when it rains hard, it's.
It's coming down.
It's coming down.
I looked at it the other day.
Yeah, it's a ditch full of rocks. I mean, it's not going to do a great job. Those rocks actually slow the water down a little bit so that it doesn't erode, you know, all that stuff, so. Yeah. Yeah, so we're still like we talked about before, as soon as you can get that French drain or whatever, we'd wanna be. More involved at this point if you do it this way, but whatever gets it to tie into where we pick up water and transfer it out. We'd love to work with you on on getting it after it gets to that point, just kinda pushing it pushing it on down to get out of your way.
Like we said, if I had to go across the front yard with a big ditch or something and maybe just.
That'd be a deep ditch, cause you're gonna go uphill.
Well, hey, well, hey, hey, you know, when you're getting flooded out every time.
I understand.
You gotta come up with some kind of engineer. Y'all, you know, the city is saying you're not responsible, you know, and this is a. We've been in the city limits for some years and the city is like, no, it's not 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 responsible.
Oh, it's not. I mean, the city's not responsible for my flooding issues either. I have them. Some water made it into my house over the weekend. And it's not the city's responsibility.
But we will help you to get the water if you help us to the proper place. We will.
I mean, I don't mind. Like I say, you help me. I've been wanting to try to get this situation solved because like I say, I do.
All it takes is money.
Well, I know money and and people willing to do it. It takes both of them. It takes both of them.
Did you sign up or you?
Oh, I haven't signed up.
Oh, okay. I'm not trying to keep it formal like that, but if you could fill out a form before you leave. That'd be that'd be great, so you can state your name.
I'm I'm Sid Abella, you see Dr. Abella. Uh, I acquired one oh five Dewes Drive way back twenty seventeen. And the way I look at it is the the easement that we have, the one oh five Dewes Drive, which every property is giving. That ditch is not serving us, it's serving the the storage. Because if the city can review the storm plan for that storage that we have there. It used to be gravel parking. Now he's paving a lot of it and dumping it for ditch, so. That ditch is our easement, but we're not we're not using it. Uh, it's serving the purpose of the storage company and one that the storm, the sheet flow. In that big area dumps into the ditch and it overflows, it floods one oh seven. And at one time, one oh five is higher than one oh seven, and there was one time that it reached my garage door. So I think this if the city were to view the approval of the storage that has been paving right now, it used to be. Percolating gravel. It was designed to absorb storm, but now he's paving a lot and it's bringing to our ditch. So one solution I can offer is if the storage company or the storage. Place would dump his storm to the front, out on our ditch, that would help a lot. Or, uh, at the time, we were here a long time ago, there was an agreement that at least. The overflow on that north ditch will be caught by another, uh, storm. A ditch or RCP or whatever there was.
On the south side?
On the south side. And it never happened. We we were willing, they were talking about asking us another easement. For that side of the ditch, then it never happened. And I thought that cutting of the trees was part of it and then. The the overlay came and nothing here. So I think the problem is that ditch which is we. As owners of Dewes Drive is not serving our purpose. It's it's serving the stores, not us. And I was talking to the gentleman, if he can cut another ditch north of him so that he can run the flow to the one ten. He's not willing to do it. So we are absorbing the pro- his problem. And I don't know why the city approved that storm to the neighborhood. It should be to the street or one ten. So that's all I can say.
Yeah, thank you for that.
I signed up. My name is Jeff Wright. I live at one oh six, uh, one ten south.
Hello, Jeff.
Up top and when you were talking about DeMarcus' problem in the back of his property, all that floodwater. I have a pond on my property that that water comes off the street and the ditch he's talking about goes across. DeMarcus' fills up my pond, then it starts backing up. My pond's probably ten feet deep. Been there since nineteen twenty. So they were thinking that's causing the flooding. Well, it's not. It's actually relieving it. For him to put just a French drain in his backyard, it's not gonna alleviate anything. There's gotta be at least a four foot RCP pipe with a lift station and all that. Put back there and drained either across the land and down to the creek. Or pumped back up to the road to come down the ditch. I use, I'm a, uh, commercial plumbing project manager. You know, a little French, a four inch French drain, a six inch French drain, it would take that water out. And there's thousands of gallons of water running there. And it is with his sewer backing up stagnant now, drains. I took a took the audio earlier of the bullfrogs in it. I mean, it's like deathening, which is kinda nice. It's a nice nature thing, but DeMarcus' problem is bigger than just a French drain.
Thank you. Yes, sir. You'd like to come on up, please? Oh, you got your form with you? Could you hand that out to Mr. Mrs. Black, please, sir? Right here up front. It's confusing. Mrs. Black is wearing green.
I'm Malika Dewes. I live on one oh nine Dewes Drive and, uh. One one of the problems is when they put those apartments in there, we there was a ditch on the north side. Of Hagan where Hagan comes across, all the way to, uh, Whittledown. There was a ditch in there that took the water off of us. It used to run under one ten, uh, all the way down to Whittledown. They fill that ditch in and now we're getting all that water. We tried to talk to them about, matter of fact, they got the little bearers still up there now. Uh, I guess they construction bearers.
Those silt fence things, yeah.
We we tried, uh, well, I tried to get them to come move that and put that ditch in there. They gave me a letter. And that's it. Said they won't do it and they said they were gonna, uh, gravel Hagan Road all the way across down down through there. But they never have. We can't get can't get them back here once we put that those apartments in.
Mr. Dewes, do you experience flooding issues at your house or standing water at your house flooding issues?
Yeah, part of my my backyard.
It's on the other side of his.
On the other side of his. So I have standing water in my backyard. But, uh, the city have drawn up several different maps. I I didn't bring them tonight. But how they could fix that problem. But nothing has never happened.
What would you like to see, Evan?
What would you like, what would I like to see? That street, uh, curb and gutter. Uh, and that ditch put on up on Hagan side, north side of Hagan Road there. It goes all the way on one ten and all the way back out backside to Whittledown. That will stop a lot of the water. We didn't have that problem until they fill that ditch in. And then boys, how 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 wide, fifty, we're talking about thirty and sixty.
What's our standard? Thirty-two back to back, thirty-two feet.
Thirty-two feet?
Do you want a turn lane in it, is that?
I think, uh, with curb and gutters in there, I think you get to thirty-two feet. Cause I think it's like what, twenty-five now?
I'm not sure.
But it's just gonna make it look nice.
Well, that too. But we we like nice things too.
I don't blame you. I wish I wish Memory Lane was curb and gutter.
I'm I'm looking at the map and just looking at the, it looks like it's sixteen feet or something. It looks really small.
Pretty narrow.
Yeah.
If you measure down it with in on that telephone pole to the other side, I think it's like twenty-five feet.
Oh, okay. Might get bigger at the end. I don't know. It's still looking like about sixteen feet.
And if we incorporate that ditch on the north side, Mary, like, you know. The ditch doesn't need to be there if you've got curb and gutter.
Oh, we can bring that ditch in as part of it. Okay, so we'll reclaim that ditch. When we're running that curb and gutter so we can reclaim that part of it.
I think you'll get you your thirty-two feet out of there. But that that ditch is, uh, anywhere six to eight feet wide.
Okay. Yeah, after we reclaim that ditch on the north side, we're coming to the south. So if we gotta get some property on the south side to reach that that minimum, then. It's what we need approval from the property owners on, so we're not imminent domaining anything in the part of this process.
Thank you, Mr. Dewes.
Thank you, Mr. Dewes. So from what I'm hearing in the conversation is the property owners are open to considering widening that road and seeing what that would look like for them. Does somebody else sign up?
This is the one that already spoke.
I'm Felicia Williams on seven Dewes Drive.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have one more comment to make. I'm with DeMarcus. Somebody made a comment about getting a rotor router to come out for the lift station when it overflowed. The lift station is on the street. You don't call rotor router, you call the city.
Yeah, and I think the city manager answered that. He he wasn't aware of where it was located.
Okay, well, sometimes comments shouldn't be made unless they don't, you know, if every, let's just make sure everybody's understanding what's going on. The lift station at the end of the street stopped up because it was full of grease. Y'all don't have a chemical to produce to cut the grease. That's what happened. His yard is full of is full of feces. We have to pay to get it cleaned up. That's all we're asking is for somebody to help. That's all. So I'm just listening and I'm not very happy about what I'm hearing because they just need help. That's all. If everybody doesn't understand what a lift station is, find out what it is before you comment about stuff. Find out how the grease in sewer every holiday fills up and they have to have somebody come out. The city does. I don't think everybody understands it. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, so, uh, direction of staff is to put together a proposal for widening that street to our specifications. And be in contact with, uh, property owners with that proposal. And at some point.
I'd rather bring it back to the council first.
Yeah, we will need to negotiate.
So that we can talk about what that impact looks like.
So I do have one quick question, if it's okay.
Yes, sir.
Back at the back, the the separation between the the pond and his backyard is. That is not, uh, part of the city's right of way or anything like that, is it? So getting it to a creek or or whatever, um, they were talking about back there. That's not even, cause like Matt's yard, uh, where that creek runs through. We were told that was, you know, private property on that, so.
It is. Creeks are creeks are still private property unless they're in the right of way. The creek that runs behind my house is private property too.
So is that the case here? It's private property?
So, Miss Black, what is widening the street? How is that going to help with this situation?
So I think there there are different and separate concerns. I do think that, uh, Mr. Hawkins does get. Water from the north side of that street when that ditch fills up in significant rains. You know, we had four and a quarter inches of rain. In a couple of hours yesterday morning, he was probably getting water off of the north side of that street. And so the curb and gutter with proper elevation of driveway approaches would help stop some of the water. He's getting from the north side of that street and all of those property owners on the south side of that street. If they're getting any that's crossing the road, that would help prevent that. And it would also help the water that is going in that north ditch to stay clear and get to one ten a little bit faster. I think it does hold a little bit of water right now because we have to get it deep enough so that it's not crossing the road. And so I do think it's probably holding a little bit of stagnant storm water at times. Um, but I also think, you know, the impetus for them asking that is that they would like to have a standard with. Conditioned city roadway, so I do think it will help with some of the storm water, but again, it's not gonna solve. Mr. Hawkins' issue and Mr. Hawkins is aware of that. And I do think it'll help alleviate some of the the water that he is getting from the north side.
Would it be able to handle more water flow than that ditch can?
That I don't know, Mary. Our engineers would have to have to answer that question.
Yeah, it seems like we kinda know what's coming, so maybe we could engineer for that. Because like they're saying, they're they're, uh, we're getting runoff from the storage, the storage buildings. And the things that used to be alleviated by that ditch that ran where the Hagan Road cut through was. I'm looking at a pretty old version of Google Maps and I don't see that ditch. Maybe it's under some trees or something that wanna buy Hagan Road, but. So I don't know where to put that back to make things right if we were able to get movement on the property owners for that, but. Yeah, it'd be good to engineer it in such a way they could handle the capacity that we know is.
But as a property owner, homeowner, part of this process for each of them, I think they're gonna wanna know what the cost will be on their part. So that's that's something that, you know, information they have will help them make that decision, help us make the decision. And I'm open to some options. I mean, I don't think there's, you know, there's more than one way it's gonna get, but it just has to be a legal way, obviously, and what we're allowed to do, so.
So we can certainly go back to engineering, have them design, you know, curb and gutter, what that looks like. Understanding, they can do a survey to see what kind of water is coming along that north side of that ditch and what it should be able to handle. Um, to help prevent some of that water crossing the roadway issue. And as a part of that, they will do an opinion of probable construction cost and that will give us an idea. Um, and you all an idea to determine what you would like to see that cost share be and how we can break that down. So we can do all of that as a part of the design process with our engineering firm.
Question. On the lift station, we are taking matter matters into proper maintenance now.
So we we are and we have been, um, there are lift stations throughout town and areas throughout town. That do get grease back up. We continually ask people not to put grease. Down their sinks, um, and and part of the Texas tort claims act is we have very little control. No control over what people put in their sewage systems. Um, we do, we are taking a more active approach in that area. The last thing we want is sewage backing up in anyone's yard or home. Um, with TJ on board now, I know he and his team are taking a much more active approach to preventing that when and where we can. Um, we will not be foolproof on preventing grease backups in our sewer system. Um, uh, we will, we will continue to do the best that we can to address that as it comes up. And like I said, he's he's got a much more proactive program going now than what we've had in the past.
Can we put something on the water bills or something on social media, just remind people like if you do this, this could happen? And it could happen to your neighbor, not just you. It could happen to your neighbor for something you do.
It's real easy to get your grease from fried chicken or whatever and just pour it down the drain. That is so easy, but it's totally wrong. I have a container at home that I put mine in, you know, it's just, it's just not cool.
Most likely it's not gonna happen to you.
Well, it can impact, it can impact you as a private person. You can grease back up on your own property, so.
So you said TJ's taken some proactive measures to make sure that grease buildup is mitigated to some extent?
So we have some degreaser that we're adding and then like I said, it's some additional microorganisms that help break that.
Mr. Dewes, would you wanna come back up?
How many of these lift stations are there for him to check? I mean, hundreds?
No, no, we have what, eight lift stations.
And that's what he would have to check for the grease?
Yes, sir, Mr. Dewes.
Well, but it can also build up in pipe.
Yes, there there, and it's front yard. There is a manhole. That manhole fills up. When they come down and open it up, they have to take something and and dig through that stuff. Because it stopped up. It goes to the end of the road. It stopped up at the end of the road and then they have to go down toward the creek. To push it back out, all the way back up to on Dewes Drive. And that that is happening not too long ago. You open the open the manhole up and it, I mean, it's just.
So it's one of those big manholes, like big one?
The manhole that's happening, yes, yes. There's a manhole in the corner of Mr. Hawkins' backyard that also overflowed when it.
See, it's nowhere, it's nowhere for that to go, actually. From us coming down there. Where's it gonna go? It backs up on Mark, cause he's the lowest, uh, house on the street.
Yeah. Every municipality in America has the same problem, but I just wanted to make sure-
Thank you, Mr. Deuce.
That we are doing proact, proactive.
Yes, sir.
Good.
There's nothing that we can do now but going forward. We have to pop a chemical to help break this down.
As best we can, yes.
And, and Mr. Deuce, can you, cause you said most of them are here, can you, uh, reach out to the ones that aren't here possibly and, and let them know kinda what we're discussing?
Pretty much every, majority, majority is you.
Majority is, so would it have to be unanimous or just that side of the street, Miss Leslie?
Uh, I have to go back and look. It's been a while since I've done special assessments.
I think it's a, it's a pretty large portion. It might be four-fifths or something.
Yeah, some sort of majority.
Yeah, so it's like a supermajority or something.
So are they all seeing now and debate, are we to? Or do you have to go and look at them?
No, we'll have to go through and look at, we need to look at cost. We need to understand what we're asking of them as far as right-of-way. You know, if we're gonna need property to make that happen. Like, I think, I think what they're saying now is they'd like for us to pursue it. And then, once we get more information, it'll be a continuing discussion. Uh, because asking now without understanding costs and what they're having to give up. We need to make sure we have all that information.
And we'll get the cost as a city on the curb and gutter.
We'll get the opinion of probable construction cost, is what that's called.
So what, what do you think a turnaround would be on getting something to present to the neighborhood?
Uh, I, I'll have to do some checking here, I'm not sure.
Do we have heavesman or right-of-way near the apartment where the road used to be, uh, that, that he was referring to where it-
That's the Hagan cut-through?
Do we still have something over there?
It still shows as a, on, as a planned street.
I don't know where it, or-
I, I would just be curious if, if a small swale ditch through there would help evade some of this as well?
Dig a ditch where the road's mapped out to be?
For now. I, I mean, if it helps, it helps. I, I-
You just gotta have somewhere for it to go.
I feel like everything we've asked, we've been told we can't do this, we can't do this, but I don't know what we can do anymore, so.
Yeah, I think if we get, if we get the right flow through that curb and gutter that's going in, then that might be the end of it as far as catching all that water that comes in, so.
But we'll get an explanation from an engineer.
Yes, sir.
Awesome.
Cool, cause I'm definitely an engineer.
I'm not an engineer either.
Mr. Reif, you'd be looking at it, right, Mr. Reif? You'd be looking at these engineering plans?
Man, I've looked at it. When Malachi came to me and we started talking about that pond and we said it may be a problem. I went back and looked at floodwater plane surveys from back to whenever they first started. Looking to see if that pond was there, and that pond's built from like nineteen-twenty. But the stormwater and flood, the Texas state or the FEMA flood plane actually runs that creek. There's not even a flood plane on the map-
Right.
That shows Deuce Drive, but they're flooding. You know what I'm saying? And, I mean, I've got a high sight on the pond that's been there since nineteen-twenty that's backed that up. I could take a, a D-1 dozer and knock that down, but it ain't gonna help the problem because all that water's gonna go across my land, across Dustin Stevens' land, and then end up behind all the townhomes right there, probably on the street. It just doesn't, it just collects right there. Just an indentation.
All right.
And one other question, Mayor, I mean-
Yeah.
Would we wanna consider, kinda the option we considered years ago, I'd say we, previous council considered buying the property?
Uh, it'd be up to the property owner.
Would that be something you'd be open to?
Say that again.
Of, of the city purchasing the property at a, at a price, obviously, after a year?
I think about that one, yes.
Okay.
Okay. So you'd be open to negotiating with the city manager on maybe a price? Is that what you're saying? Sir?
Yes, he can negotiate. Y'all can negotiate, yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
So we just, we need to, we need to put action towards the staff, so I just wanna make sure.
Sorry.
So another action to staff is to enter negotiations with the property owner of a possible purchase price of that property.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anything else on this subject? All right, thank you. Thank you all for being here. We really appreciate it. It's great when we can all come together and talk these things out. We appreciate you. All right, council, anything else on the subject before we move to the next item? All right, that takes us to item G two, discussion, consideration, and action on resolution R twenty-five dash zero-five-two-seven dash zero-one. Supporting a patrol vehicle grant for the police department. Chief Robson.
Mayor and council, I'm excited to be bringing another request for approval on a grant for a new patrol vehicle. I believe this is the third one that we brought to you. This is a process that, um, there's several steps to make all this happen, and so we're at this step here. Unfortunately, we have been provided, um, currently estimated twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars towards a patrol vehicle and equipment. Uh, typically, we'll receive our final approval sometime between July and September. So this step here, we need the, the resolution. If it's approved, will allow us to keep moving forward and present that to, uh, the grant. So that we can get this approved. Essentially, this resolution is our agreement that the funds will be used during the twenty-five, twenty-six budget year. And it will be for the vehicle and for the equipment, and it will follow, that we will follow all of the requirements that the state sets forth that we have to follow. Uh, if approved, you're authorized to use to proceed with this grant process, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
So on the financial impact, the twenty-five thousand plus twenty-five hundred says the total estimated cost to outfit the new vehicle, so that's the vehicle and outfitting is sixty. Okay, not just outfitting, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's sixty thousand dollars in outfitting.
It's a little more than the last one, of course.
Just the same vehicle size as we're currently using?
We're using, we, we're still ordering, uh, primarily, uh, the Ford Explorers right now.
And you know, the way I look at it, you guys, this is not a vehicle. This is your office.
Correct.
You know, this is their office.
For the patrol guys, it is correct.
It is, right.
And would this be folded into our fleet management? We currently have fleet management through Enterprise, I believe? Okay.
Yes.
That's great.
They've worked well with us on allowing, I call it like a balloon hanging up front that lowers our overall monthly cost.
Right.
And so Chief, of course, at the end of the, the life of the vehicle, because the grant funding was used, are we still able to put it back into the Enterprise lease program? Or does it have to be sold a separate way? Do we know?
No, it's still, it's still listed through Enterprise, so return it back through our corporate management program.
Outstanding. I mean, this is really appreciated.
Sounds like a win-win-win.
It sure does.
All right, any other questions for Chief? No? Thank you, sir. All right, uh, any other questions or comments from council on this item? None, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the grant resolution to purchase a new Ford police explorer during the twenty-five, twenty-six budget year.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Don't need to read the resolution, Miss Leslie.
Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the motion is approved. All right, now we have item G three, discussion, consideration, and action on resolution R twenty-five dash zero-five-two-seven dash zero-two. Supporting the outdoor fitness court grant. Mr. Martinez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you guys know, we are in concept planning for Shahan Park. And as part of the surveys, we identified one of the needs for accessible outdoor exercise stations. The National Fitness Campaign is offering grants to help communities be healthier by building a fitness court. It is essentially an outdoor gym.
Ooh.
We applied for one of the grants, and we're hoping to include it in Shahan Park.
So those, uh, pieces of equipment, they're affixed to the floor, the lunes, the squat?
Yes.
Nobody's gonna run off of those, right? They're bolted down?
Yes.
I saw the video on it. It looks, it looks pretty awesome. I could see, like, group exercise classes coming together and meeting out there, or just a group of people that wanna get together and push each other, meeting out there. It's-
Yes, and I have had a handful of calls about use of space for that reason, so it's gonna be nice, nice somewhere to go.
And it also may be under the canopy of trees, so it may alleviate some of the heat.
Yes, so there's also options about putting canopies over it as well.
Yeah.
I think you might, so if it's under trees, you're gonna get debris and leaves and lunes and stuff all over it, but they do have a covering. You can purchase a, a covering option for it.
Thank you for looking for ways to paper stuff. That's very helpful.
Very nice.
Yeah, that's great. Where, where do you see this going in the, in the park?
Well, they have some restrictions on distance from playgrounds and that sort of thing, so, um-
It has to be close to them or not close to them?
Not close to them.
Gotcha.
It's a separate area.
Yeah.
Right.
So I don't know, but they-
Separate but within sight, maybe, is what I'm saying.
Right, yeah. You won't have to go on an adventure out in the woods to find it. I'm not, yeah, I'm not saying that.
That's, that's part of the fitness, though.
Right, you gotta find it first, and then. Yeah, that's, that's, uh, that's really exciting. Um, is there any maintenance involved in this that you see?
So it's very, very low maintenance. Um, it's built to be outdoors and, you know, aside from, you know, going and checking it, make sure there's no leaves or debris on it. foresee a whole lot of effort.
Okay.
Cement, right? Cement, cement?
Cement.
You have to pressure wash it about every four, five, six years. That's, that's pretty normal.
Yes.
Mayor and council, it connects to an app so that users can figure out how to do the exercises the proper way. Uh, I think the total cost, Aaron, of this project is a hundred and eighty. And then we've got a fifty thousand dollar grant to help offset that cost. We would roll that into our planning for Shahan Park and our budget.
It's part of the funds we were already planning.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we're not done. We're pursuing some, um, some partners as well, some healthcare opportunities, maybe.
I have another question. Uh, is there, is there one of these in operation close by, like, around in this area of the country?
So there's one in Marshall, there's one in Silver Springs, there's one in Pittsburgh. I think the closest one is like fifty miles.
Well, good job. We'll be first in Smith County soon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's great.
Then we also made sure that the grant team knew that we were planning construction in twenty-twenty-six, and so this likely wouldn't be open until Q four of twenty-twenty-six or first quarter of twenty-twenty-seven, and they were agreeable to that. Their timeline is usually a little bit shorter. They like to get these up and going a little bit faster, but, and they were agreeable to our extended timeline, understanding that we're in the process of, uh, working on Shahan Park.
Good.
Yeah, I would like to consider what it, I mean, putting a, a cover on it. That way it gets more use. Uh, it's just a little bit more money. We could cover it and get several more days of the year use out of it. I mean, it gets pretty rough. It's pretty rough in August. Some shade would be great for these things. Uh, and if it rains a little bit, people can still, you know, still enjoy it. Other than that, it's fantastic. Yeah. Let's see, so, oh, okay, so we will need action on this, council, so if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the grant resol, resolution R twenty-five dash oh-five-two-seven dash oh-two to adopt and allocate funds for an outdoor fitness court.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. We got the motion carries. While you're up there, Mr. Martinez, update on the replacement of the Welcome to White House sign.
Mayor and council, if you'll remember, last month, we discussed replacing the Welcome to White House sign. We talked about, uh, redesign on, um, you know, some of the drawings that I, that I showed. So this one is a little more closer to what the old one looked like, um, which is the feeling that I got from you guys. And so, um, hopefully you find this agreeable. I also was able to get some samples of what wood it may, metal might look like, like wood.
Oh, wow.
So he was able to produce these for us.
So is that, is that powder coated? Like, how is that affixed to the?
So this is not.
I'm just worried about it flaking.
I actually think that under the, the lower part is, this top is not. His idea is just a clear coat, um, over this. This has not been done.
They make rollers that have those shapes, that you roll across.
That's, that's what he had some-
Oh, I see. Okay.
Was able to do that with, so.
But it'll make it stand up a lot better than wood, so.
Yeah.
And it's pretty rigid. It's pretty tough.
It is.
It's gonna be metal.
It is.
It's good.
Yeah, the durability of the metal's good. I just wanna make sure that whatever graphics are on there, whatever's painted on there, it's really durable as well, it's not flaking.
It looks nice. Very proud, you know.
Do they give you any information on, on the durability thing, like, upkeep and maintenance for five years or ten years? Has that, has that been discussed?
He, he, he suggested that we would be long gone before he had to ever come back if, if he had to do it, so.
Sir.
Well, it's got a UV coating on it, like you said.
It will.
Polyurethane, probably, yeah.
Something, something. He, he does, uh, he does, um, like, um, fixes up old cars, and so it would be some sort of clear coat that he does with the-
Strong polish.
E-estimated time to-
Yeah, so in full transparency, he gave me a four-week timeline. I would suggest that that's very aggressive. So I would estimate six to eight weeks, but-
I thought you were gonna say four months, so.
I think the faster he gets it done, the better it is for him, so maybe he will do that, but I, I don't wanna, it scares me to suggest that, so. I would say prepare for it, at least, and if we get it done earlier, that'll be great things.
We just need to decide upon the lighter color or the darker color, correct?
Yeah, I mean, this one, I think, looks more like the old sign.
I do, too.
Um, but yeah, I wanted to show-
And I love the white lettering. Big plus. You can actually see it.
I agree.
And it looks like, it looks American, like America, you know, with the red, white, and blue and all the deal. It looks nice.
Yep.
Something to be proud of.
And, and reading the packet, this would or would not have LED light?
It would.
But is that projected lighting on the sign or actually?
It would be inside the sign, so it would be-
In the white area?
The white area would be recessed and lighted.
Wait, the white, the white letters would be recessed and lighted?
Yes.
Oh, wow. And it'll still have the light shining on it from the, do we still need the light shining on it from the outside?
Probably not needed.
No, I, I think we had talked about, yeah.
Oh, man, that'd be so much better. I missed that part. That sounds great.
That is pretty cool.
How you change light bulbs in there? Never mind.
It's LED, every ten years.
Takes, takes five guys. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. That was a great find. Thank you for that recommendation. All right, that's just an update. No action on that at this point. There's still, uh, action from council that's understood. I'm moving forward with that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Yeah, well ahead of when the city center opens, so that was my drop-dead date. You're not allowed to push the city center back just to make sure we get the sign in time, I'm just saying. Yeah, thank you again. All right, so that takes us down to item G five, discussion, consideration, and action on a request by the Northeast Texas Regional Mobility Authority, NET RMA, to become a participant agency with NET RMA for an environmental impact study for a proposed transportation project referred to as toll forty-nine, segment six. Mrs. Black.
Mayor and council, in your packet, I included a letter from NET RMA that is asking for us to become a participating agency within for their environmental impact statement. This is a very long study that they have to go through just to get environmental clearance and understanding of the proposed routes that I show here on your screen. They've asked that we participate. There's no fiscal impact. Uh, it just helps them in their application process to show that they have participating agencies. Uh, as you all know, the location of this additional route and segment of toll forty-nine is critical to the economic health and vitality of the city of White House. The staff recommends it's critical.
So they still haven't chosen a route. They haven't picked which one, right?
Correct. So they're gonna study, I understand, they will study all of these routes, and so that they have alternatives should something environmentally, um, important or significant come about through that study, they have an option to shift to a different route or shift the route slightly based on what you see here.
Yeah, this will be huge, taking traffic away from the city of Tyler and helping us.
Yeah, let's say they go with the teal one, then you can be out by the landfill in eight minutes, cause it goes out there, and you can be up by UT, uh, the, the campus, uh, near, near I twenty, you can be there in like eighteen minutes. So people that live here, that wanna commute to work and go up there, it makes White House an option for them.
It was just today that I looked at the traffic coming in the morning and leaving in the afternoon through our city. It has grown exponentially in five years. In this, you gotta have it. You've got to do this.
Well, there's traffic continually going down, unlike it used to be. Just that rush was the traffic, and now it's just continual. There's just all the time. There's traffic going up and down one-ten. So it'd be great to relieve, uh, some of that as well.
And nobody's here from NET RMA.
Anybody here from NET RMA? Okay. I went to their, uh, the meeting, you know, they had the meetings that were part of the packet. They, they expressed a couple of meeting times. I went to their, uh, the meeting, you know, they had the meetings that were part of the packet, they, they expressed a couple of meeting times. They had this map up on a huge table, a couple of huge tables, and people were discussing, uh, the different routes as a possibility and what the, the impact would be. So, my understanding in, in this partnership, they're asking us to be a, uh, participating agency. That means we're just a cost sharer in some of the environmental impacts, is that correct?
So there is a cost share as a part of participating.
Which is even better.
Well, all right then. So they're just looking for input, or, or what exactly are they?
They're looking for partners to help make their application stronger, they wanna show that there's regional support for these routes. And by participating, we are showing our support that the project can move forward in some way. Um, we're not showing support for any particular route, we want them to continue, we're basically saying, yes, we want them to continue the environmental impact statement.
Right.
And get connected to I twenty, for being.
I think it goes up to two seventy-one, they go all the way to I twenty. But it's pretty close.
It is.
You can still hit that gas station that sells the, uh, jerky gator there, it's still good. Um, it looks like on the timelines, they're not gonna start construction until twenty twenty-nine, so there's gonna be a lot of planning and the, the environmental impact study. So it's still a long ways off, but it's gonna be a huge benefit, uh, to the city of White House, being a partner agency on this. And Henry Bell was telling me there was an epis- there was an issue of Tyler Now or something that came out in nineteen seventy-six that was talking about the loot forty-nine coming through. And then even those segments didn't get built until like, I don't know, like the mid two, early two thousands or something. So the fact that they're moving along at this pace, I know twenty twenty-nine sounds like a long time, but it's way better than it used to be, so.
And it will be total.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Better believe it.
And when we get the loot for White House put in and connect on the forty-nine, it's gonna be great.
Loot nine oh three or whatever it is. All right, uh, so, uh, we have action on this. Yeah, yeah, I'll entertain a motion from council if there's no more questions or discussion.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the city of White House becoming a participating agency with NET RMA for an environmental impact statement. For a proposed transportation project referred to as toll forty-nine segment six.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no? Hearing none, the motion carries. All right, item, item six, discussion consideration and action on filling a vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I believe we have an application before us, council. Ms. Hargis, take it away, please.
Sir, Mayor and Council, um, as you know, we have one vacancy left on Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, we have had received an application from, I hope I say her name correctly, Serena Watson. While Ms. Watson does not have, has not previously served on a city board or commission. She does bring twenty-one years of administrative, um, experience with the local development company in Tyler. And has expressed a strong desire to, um, serve here in our community. Um, Ms. Watson is here tonight, if you have any questions for her, I'm sure she'd be happy to come up and talk with you guys. Um, at this point, I'll put it in your hands.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hargis. Ms. Watson, would you like to come up and chat with us, please? State your name and address for the record.
I'm Serena Watson, I've just purchased my home at three oh two Amanda Court, White House, Texas, seven five seven ninety-one.
Excellent.
Are you still in that same neighborhood?
So you got, you got a taste of what happens in these meetings, people come up? Or are you, is that something you're interested in being a part of?
Absolutely, I have lived in the White House community, I've raised three children here, my youngest just graduated Friday. Um, but being as active with my children growing up in White House, I wasn't really involved in the community per se as far as the other side of it. My children played sports and that's also part of the community, but then I was a mom. Now that my youngest one is leaving, um, I just feel like it's an opportunity. Even I don't know much about it, it would be an opportunity to be a voice for the community. Um, I do work for Janko Group in Tyler, I've been there twenty-two years. Uh, we are starting, they are starting its own development in Tyler. And being a resident in White House, uh, again, I've raised three children here. And I would like to just be a part of, be part of a voice of things to bring to the community. Um, as I know, having three boys, you know, we love, I love the community, obviously. And just would like to be a part of that, uh, if I could serve in some capacity.
Lucky for you, everybody up here didn't know how to be a city councilman or mayor before we did.
No clue.
Absolutely not.
You know, uh, working for the company that I work for, uh, I've been kind of just a small snippet of what comes on in building a community. Uh, from the residential into commercial, and now they are developing into bigger things. Uh, I started there when there was only five employees, I was number five.
Oh, wow, you started there, that, wow.
Yes, so I started there as the fifth employee, we now have twenty-plus employees. Um, of course, they're focusing on Tyler, I begged them to be a part of the White House community for twenty years. So, anyway, I love White House and I would like to see White House continue to grow and flourish. Uh, even though my children have all left the nest, I have grandchildren that'll be a part of the White House community. And now that I have some free time, um, I thought it'd be a nice opportunity, never thought it would come to fruition though.
So, uh, do you have experience on any boards, nonprofits, uh, any type of like, uh, community service?
Uh, only in the capacity of helping my, my son, um, you know, I was.
Band booster and stuff?
Pardon me?
Like a band booster type thing, or?
No, it, he was part of National Honor Society, so I would go along with him to Nicholas Pen Haven, or we did the East Texas Food Bank, so I've only served in that capacity. Again, I was, uh, very involved in my children's lives, so I didn't make room for much else other than being.
I could imagine.
Working and then, um, I've been a single mom for most of their time, so I've really been involved in their lives and haven't had an opportunity. Um, I have thought with the youngest one leaving. Being a part of either, like, some mentoring alliance or being a part of White House community.
Right.
Something to kind of fulfill that time because I had so much time devoted into my children, and he's actually leaving for tech. So, he's gonna be pretty far away. So I did think it'd be an opportunity to just kind of see if I could be a part of the community.
Well, just so you know, when you start this, you're gonna start saying yes to other things, so be ready.
Okay, okay.
So, uh, yeah, love, love your passion, love the reason, um, you got an empty, and we got an emptiness too. I know I'm supposed to miss my kids, I don't, I don't miss them yet, I'm sorry. You put stuff in the fridge, it stays there, you clean up a mess, it stays clean, but, uh, I definitely understand wanting to use your time and talent. That you broke up as a part of that organization and putting it to use, you're gonna have a pretty big learning curve. If you've never been part of a formal board, they follow Robert's rules, they, they have an open meeting, everything you say is on record and lives forever. It's just part of it. So, uh, yeah, I would love to see, uh. Uh, if you, if you do join us, I would love to see some kind of onboarding process to get you up to speed. So that you can keep up with things that are happening within the meetings, if you're open to that.
Yes, totally.
Um, any more questions from council? For Ms. Watson?
Thank you, Ms. Watson.
All right, thank you, Ms. Watson, thank you for coming. You'd be amazed how many people apply for this position that don't show up. All right, council, you have a recommendation for appointment before you, any conversation or recommendations?
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor and Council. To appoint Serena Watson to fill one unexpired term on the P and T Commission.
All right, we have a recommendation from council and low.
Second that.
Second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, with that, the motion passes, welcome to the team, our people will be calling your people. But thank you for stepping up and engaging in the community, we really appreciate it. All right, that takes us down to. I, I lost where I was, okay, we're on number seven. Um, discussion consideration and action on resolution R twenty-five dash zero five two seven dash zero three. Directing publication of notice on intent to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation and resolving other matters related to the subject. Mrs. Black.
Mayor and Council, as we discussed at your workshop, um, the week, we can have you, whenever that was, it seems like a long time ago, what's happened between now? Uh, we have several capital projects that were identified as part of our twenty twenty-two capital improvements planning process. Um, the top of the list of those projects included a fire station, uh, demolition and rebuild. And a city hall expansion and renovation. Um, with that, we understand that that will cause some improvements to be needed at City Park, and then we also, about a month ago, went through. Quite an extensive list of public works projects that we're gonna need to consider in the near future. With that, staff reached out, reached out to our financial advisors to see what options and opportunities we may have. Paul Jason with Specialized Public Finance is here tonight to present, um, what a certificate of obligation issuance would look like. And the timeline for us to move through that.
What, what was the name again, I'm sorry?
Paul Jason.
Paul Jason, welcome to the meeting, yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Set, Paul Jason with Specialized Public Finance, we serve as, uh, financial advisor, uh, to the city. My partner, Stephen Adams, and I, I've got, uh, I think. Given past that hard copies of the presentation. Uh, but a certificate of obligation is a pretty common debt instrument used by cities. Uh, this would be the city's, I believe, sixth certificate that you've issued in the last twenty years. Very common practice to fund critical infrastructure and basic needs for a city. Uh, so we were tasked looking at options to fund, uh, these projects that were part of your CIP. And one of the tasks was to keep your current debt service tax at roughly twenty-nine cents. So you've got two components, of course, you've got your M and O and your, your debt service tax, and so, um, your debt service tax is, is able to. Uh, stay at twenty-nine cents so long as you contribute some of your debt service fund balance. You've built up a very nice reserve in that fund balance, uh, that can be used for situations like this. Uh, so how we modeled it is we feel we structured a very conservative growth estimate in your tax base. Leslie and, and to a percentage of your preliminary values, uh, for twenty twenty-five, uh, those came in about eight percent higher. Uh, we're modeling five percent growth through twenty thirty-three and then three percent thereafter. Uh, your current INS fund balance, your debt service fund is roughly one point s- uh, one point seven million. We use roughly one point one of that over the next three years, uh, to help manage that, that debt service tax. Uh, if council decides to move forward tonight, I will price our bond issue at a meeting in July, that's when we'll set rates, July twenty-second, and then we'll close August twenty-first. One of the reasons, uh, to try to close before September first is, uh, certificates of obligation and debt. In general is under attack, um, with this current legislative session. Uh, there's a lot of bills that are out there to try to make it more restrictive, harder for cities to sell debt. And so that's one of the reasons, plus there's also a debt ratio cap they're trying to, uh, put into effect. If you've heard lately, I heard some of those are slowly dying, hopefully. Uh, but it would really hinder cities that are growing like yours to keep up with basic infrastructure. So, uh, one of the reasons is to get this closed by September first, whatever comes down your way, this debt should not, should be grandfathered under the, uh, the old laws. So, um, the model was set up on page two, uh, this is how we model fifteen million in debt to be supported with your current INS rate. Uh, your tax base growth is on the left side, you can see your current values are roughly eight hundred and eighty million, and that's the preliminary value. And then we grow it five percent through twenty thirty-three, and then this debt is structured around your current debt. This existing tax-supported debt is currently paid for by your twenty-nine cents, and we model the new debt, roughly fifteen million. Uh, based off the growth assumptions and using your INS fund balance, um, in the, uh, columns to the third, fourth from the right. You can see we use roughly four hundred and twelve thousand and twenty-six, and then three hundred and seventy-seven and three hundred and thirty thousand. For a total of one point one million. If our values come in higher, uh, we would use less fund balance, they come in lower, vice versa, but you've got a nice cushion. Uh, you've got roughly one point seven million, you'd probably wanna keep at least twenty-five percent, so you will not deplete those balances below the, the twenty-five percent that's recommended. Page three is just the, uh, the legal amount of debt that we're proposing to issue to fund these projects, it's fifteen point one four five. The notice of intent has fifteen point five, uh, that's just cushion, that's just a not to exceed amount. It gives us flexibility when we competitively bid this, investors want a different couponing structure, like the premium bond or a discount bond. It gives us some flexibility to make sure we can attract as many bidders as possible, uh, so our goal is to fund the fifteen million. Page four is the timeline, tonight just kicks off the process, if this council decides to move forward. Uh, this is the first step in the issuance of COs, you'd approve a notice of intent that would go in the paper for two consecutive weeks. And it'll have to, uh, to run, um, at those exact dates. The clock starts June sixth, and you will, will work with your bond counsel. Um, you can't award these COs sooner than forty-five days of that first publication. Uh, that gives constituents an opportunity in the event they wanna petition it. Um, that, uh, is what the reason is for that forty-five day wait period, I don't think the city's ever had an issue with. Any sort of projects funded with COs and a petition or anything like that. Uh, so we'll come back to the council July twenty-second, that, when the rates will be set, and then we'll close roughly thirty days after that. Uh, we'll go through the rating process again, the city has a very good, uh, credit rating at double A, uh, the highest that you can go is, is triple A. Uh, so you're, you're in very good standing from a credit profile standpoint, uh, so that's.
And we've had two rating increases in the last.
You've had, uh, multiple, uh, rating upgrades despite the debt that you've issued. They've, they've taken into account that you're keeping up with your infrastructure and keeping strong reserves, so that's, uh, definitely helpful with the, the rate. Um, we modeled a rate of four point seven seven percent, that's got about twenty-five basis points of cushion. Uh, that would be a fixed rate for the life of the bond issue and then call it one about ten years. Um, so if we were to sell today, we'd probably be closer to four point four, four point five percent, so.
So if we did this, you think there's chances would improve our credit rating, positively or?
When you sell debt, uh, the rating agencies look at it as, you know, you add leverage, you add risk, but the city's been able to sell debt to keep up with your infrastructure. Um, you know, this does not require a major revenue increase, you can support it at your current tax rate. Uh, I think being able to layer on this debt, uh, keep up with growth, I think there's, you know, a really good chance we're gonna keep our rating. Uh, that would be the goal, uh, and then I think there's still some upward pressure on the rating, once you get over your, your growth cycle, which is gonna be sometime, so.
I understand the risk of not issuing the debt, right? Uh, but what is the risk of doing it in advance, like this, just that you may not get as high a rating as you otherwise would? Or is there a reason not to do this, I guess is what I'm asking.
You want me to take that?
Go ahead, and then I'll add to it.
So one of the reasons why we wanted to accelerate this is because of legislation. And your legislation would, would definitely hinder your ability to, to sell debt and fund your, your, what's been proposed, fund your capital program. Um, you know, the, we typically, we tell clients, you sell debt when you need the money. Or there's some situation, and I know this is part of your CIP that you did undertake, and these are important projects to the city, so. I mean, the, the risk with waiting is there's legislation that will just make it harder to sell COs. Uh, debt, debt instrument to support your infrastructure, or also a debt ratio, they might limit you on how much debt you can sell, so that, that's.
And that limits based on existing debt, is what I saw.
Over three years?
It, so, and I think it's changing daily.
Oh, my god.
Uh, but if you close by nine one, it's debt that's sold after nine one. So we'll get this one in before nine one, so it's not applicable to twenty percent of your last three years of total tax collections.
I may have asked that question the opposite of what I intended. I understand that legislation is coming, which is why we would want to expedite this. But I'm saying, what is the risk by expediting? What do we potentially lose or what, like, if, say, the legislation doesn't go through and we, we just sit on this? Is there a benefit to doing that normally?
Well, you need to spend the money in three years, so you've gotta spend down requirements, since this is tax exempt debt, so when you sell the debt, you need to have the intent to spend it down in three years. And, and so we're only selling this debt because it's a critical need of the city and something that's been contemplated for some time.
So it just means we start a timer and we've got three years to spend down?
Yes, sir.
And so, to me, the biggest risk is probably selfishly a little bit of a bandwidth issue in being able to manage the completion of city centers. So the other projects that we have going on, adding in city hall, fire station, city park, Shangen Park.
Trying to get to, thank you.
All of those things, um, being able to, to get those projects designed, under construction, managing construction, some of those kind of things. I think will be, will be the hurdle in doing it now, but I think these projects that we've identified and we're at the top of the list in twenty twenty-two. You know, they're not gonna get any cheaper, and it's, there's never gonna be a better time, right, it's kind of like having a baby, I think, I don't know that there's ever a good time to take on that level of construction project. Um.
And these ideas, some of them started in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, so. That was. Seven years ago.
Yes, so.
I got you.
But I think, I think that's the main risk, is getting it spent through years and then the bandwidth issue.
And so for the, for the laypeople like me, I want to make sure everybody understands that according to the figures, if everything pans out, this would have zero tax increase on any taxpayers.
That's correct. So we're modeling this, your current debt service tax rate is twenty-nine cents. This is modeled to keep that tax rate at twenty-nine cents through the life of these COs. Actually, it drops in 2033 because your debt drops off. But that is the goal, is to use your current fund balance, manage that with your growth rate, and keep that tax rate at twenty-nine cents for your debt. You support this.
And in the meantime, we get possibly a new fire station, renovation of city hall, renovation of parks, and some other stuff that benefit the citizens at no extra cost.
That's keep the tax rate on the debt side the same.
And I like how conservative you guys are with the growth. You know, at five percent is pretty conservative, then it drops down to three percent. And even given that, we have more, more funds and fund balance to cover that. If we have a year that doesn't grow that five percent, we still have fund balance and debt service that we can, that we can put towards that.
And at the workshop, my other concern, which I asked Ms. Black, and she's able to answer, is how does this affect the city growing in other areas? At the police department, the fire department, and other places? And that's a total separate tax rate from this, so it wouldn't affect our ability to grow in those areas.
That, this would have no impact as far as the physical building, construction, now the operating of these. That's the M and O side of the question, too.
This is all premised on population growth. It has nothing to do with population growth. Population growth can help us, right?
They're paying taxes.
It has to do with property tax growth. So commercial businesses don't necessarily have, they follow population, but they themselves do not have a population component. But that's really what we want to attract, is the commercial growth, so that we're not impacting our residential property taxpayers. So that's part of the efforts of the EDC. So yes, it tangentially does have to do with population growth. But the idea is that you capture that back from your commercial or new construction and not on your existing taxpayers.
It's predicated on your total tax base growth, the total value in the city, which, you know, commercial activity drives jobs, drives other. So, and that's where, as you mentioned, we're looking at a pretty conservative estimate based on what you've grown historically. We know you're not going to hit five percent every year. You may hit three percent one year. You may hit eight percent one year. But you've got that balance in your debt service fund to cushion that, to keep that tax rate the same.
And I got my property tax valuation, so I think we're going to hit this year. I think we're good.
Which we do not set.
Yeah, we don't set that.
We do not set the valuation. And just as a reminder, for residential homesteads, they are capped at ten percent growth each year. So when you see that the total value goes up significantly, keep in mind that you're probably hitting that ten percent growth cap.
And did I see a bill that said that they changed the homestead and increased that exemption also?
Hundred and forty, yeah.
Well, for seniors. And also the senior citizens.
Yeah, they made a few changes for senior citizens this year, if you're not already frozen. That's right. So, yeah, the school district's getting, and, oh, we'll get into that.
Oh, come on.
That hundred and forty doesn't hit them as hard as it could, but that's good. All right, any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate you being here. Ms. Black?
Staff recommends approval.
Yeah. I mean, this is, this is some expedited work on doing this. It's stuff we would have done, definitely, a few months from now to get the ball rolling on it. And it's a, this is a commitment from our staff to take on more work. So in addition to what they do right now, they'll have several projects in the works, in, in production. What do you call that? In progress, more work in progress for them to manage. So I appreciate the staff being on board with taking that on to put us in the right position.
I know a lot of cities would love to have this.
Agreed.
I guarantee you. I feel very comfortable. We're so fortunate. People really want to live in this area. We're blessed.
So I, for one, appreciate staff staying on top of this stuff in the legislature and coming to us with this, even though we're not quite sure how it's still going to pan out. I think at the end of the day, to give more city services to the citizens, to get more infrastructure to the citizens without increasing their tax rate is always a positive. I think these are things that White House needs in order to continue its growth and the great things we're doing. So I call it a favor. I love the idea, only because it is budget neutral, it's conservative, and it addresses issues that need to be done today.
All right, any further discussion or question from council? None, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve R twenty-five dash oh five two seven dash oh three, directing publication of a notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates obligation and resolving other matters relating to the subject.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, get a roll call vote, sorry. Ms. Nichols, your first roll call vote, could you issue that, please? I think there's a button.
Zach Briscoe, Fransell Burns, John Chambers.
Yes.
Michael Lowe.
Yes.
Matt Lazar.
Yes.
All right, that is unanimous approval. All right, so that takes us down to item eight, discussion, consideration, and action to authorize a city manager to execute an agreement with half engineering on the development of standardization bid documents to use in future municipal construction projects. Mrs. Black?
Mayor, Council, if you all remember, about a year ago now, we made a change in our municipal engineers and decided to go with a couple of different firms that we had not used in the past. As we've worked through with both half and Kimberly Horn, one of the things that we have found is that we do not have a standardized set of bid documents to use for construction projects. So everything from drainage to parking lots, sports complex, all different types of construction projects. The developing a bid package for these types of projects is a very large task, and half has agreed to take that on for us. We asked them to prepare that. They've come back with a proposal for that. This is not an expense that has been budgeted, but will save us quite a bit of time and effort as we move through and start making some of these projects happen. So staff is recommending approval, and we would take the funding of that from fund balance for the current fiscal year.
So this would make staff more efficient in doing their jobs?
Yes, and it will help us get projects from design out to bid faster. And we can use that same standardized set of documents for all of our projects. We won't own those documents, so whether we're using half or a different engineering firm, they will be our documents that we can use as a part of that process. We do have a representative from half here if you have any questions for her.
Yeah, any questions? No, sounds pretty straightforward. We're going to standardize things to make it easier.
Yeah.
Everything will flow better.
A little faster.
Get to twenty twenty-five.
All right, so, yeah, it sounds like we, we need an action from council. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize a city manager to execute an agreement with half engineering for the development of standardized bid documents to use in future municipal construction projects.
I second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, that, the motion carries. That takes us down to item H nine, discussion, consideration, and action to rescind resolution R twenty-four dash zero one zero two two dash zero two and approve resolution R twenty-five dash zero five two seven dash zero four, combined financial and procurement policies and procedures for local and federal grants as needed for the community development grant mitigation, CDBG dash MIT resilient communities program. RPC, Mrs. Black?
Mayor, Council, last October, we brought forth a resolution ten twenty-two dash oh two to approve financial policies as a part of this grant program. And talking with both the grant team at the general land office and our group consultant, those financial policies did not quite meet what they were looking for, and so they asked us to go back and revise them. So staff is asking that we rescind that resolution, adopt a new resolution with the updated policies. We pulled some sample policies from two other cities who have already received the grant and combined them to make sure that they fit our current internal controls and policies that we follow now, and will resubmit them. So we would ask that you rescind that resolution and adopt the new one.
Sounds reasonable.
Cleaning it up.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to rescind resolution R twenty-four dash one zero two two dash zero two and approve resolution R twenty-five dash oh five two seven dash oh four, combined financial and procurement policies and procedures for local and federal grants policy. I'm not saying all those other letters.
Second.
Uh, yeah, I think the numbers alone, we're good enough, and we got a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, with that, the motion passes. Takes us down to item G ten, consider future agenda items.
I'm sure we have a list somewhere.
Hopefully in front of all of y'all.
So according to the schedule on this thing, we're going to have at least one agenda item there, right?
So to this thing on my conversations with the property owner, if we think that we're ready to come back, we will. Also, we will need to look at changing some of our meetings in August, as we do every year, to meet our budget deadlines, budget and tax rate adoption deadlines, and we'll be bringing that to you in June.
So we may have two or three meetings?
Well, most likely have two meetings in August in order to meet our public hearing and adoption deadlines.
Yeah, sounds fair.
We will have a zoning case, two zoning cases that will likely come before you out of planning and zoning.
Oh, you hear that? Got your work cut out for you already.
Get ready. Get your parachute.
And do you think the sign will be back up for this next meeting, or?
He said four to six weeks.
Uh, but we'll just give you an update, was that, yeah.
Yeah, there's an update on that.
Maybe an update on the next one.
We'll see. Always picture a brand-new, pretty sign.
Yes.
With white letters.
With white letters.
At this time, you can put in to put something on a future agenda, or is that a next?
If you'll reach out to one of us, then, then we can put that on there for you, just, yeah. But there's not a, there's not a way to formally present it in this meeting, no, sir. Yeah, you can stick around after and talk to us. That would be, that'd be fine.
I talked to you this morning. My name is Ross Stern.
Okay, yeah, yeah, if you'll stick around, we can, we can chat about it. All right, that takes us to item H, administrative reports, receive reports from staff, the April reports.
It bounced back.
Yeah, I got a, I got a are-you-sure over here, too. Okay, it goes back, it, it works.
I do have a question on the reports.
Yes, sir.
The code enforcement area that we used to look at, you know, on the, on Fridays, it would be put back on the, is, we're going to be able to look at that?
We can, if that's what you'd like, yes.
I mean, that's, that's so helpful.
We'll add a section here, too. It's cheaper, wasn't mentioned.
Okay, let's scroll down. Our wire revenue is up above a little bit.
I did want to show you our sales tax. That was back up a little bit in May, so that was good to see that we had.
What happened in February was Valentine's Day. Okay, I mean, it's historically higher for some reason.
More Amazon business.
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah. Oh, maybe quarterly, quarterly reporting.
Sewer revenue's up.
I'm seeing some stuff in legislation about franchise fees related to, like, streaming providers. Do you know if that has any impact on us?
I haven't been following that one closely. I'll take a look at it and see. February, May, and then holidays.
Oh, I see. Yeah, it was something about determining the cost of goods sold with people that are providing streaming services or something, so. Either it sounds like it's going to be good for us or bad for us, and I can't figure out which one it is. Well, the permits are, yeah, the permits are going down.
Yeah, and we did do a walkthrough on a phase apart Meadows the other day, right? So we'll, we'll see some of those start, start coming in, hopefully. Susan likes to remind me that our 2025 numbers are sustainable numbers. Those numbers that we saw in 2022 were non-sustainable numbers of growth, so it's been a little bit easier to manage on the development services side.
Developers have total control over electric, natural gas, et cetera, right?
I would say total control. I mean, they have to go in based on what, where those providers provide the service.
We don't have any control over natural gas in the house.
No, sir.
Okay, we just don't, okay.
You mean requiring them to have it, or?
Yeah, I mean, all electric, I, I mean, I just wouldn't.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to force anybody to use it.
No, 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 I didn't know what we, we, yeah.
We don't have anything on the books, so whether we can or not, I'm not, I'm not certain. I don't know that I've ever been asked that, so.
In some places, you go in, it's easy. I mean, Bunch over in Forestville just set up his own, I mean, he had to, like.
He did.
Yeah, he had to.
Instead of Point Canyon, Canyon to back for him, they had a mobile trailer, you know?
Yeah, we, we know.
I mean, I, I love gas, you know, you know, net, you know. I don't like all electric, that's just me. Good job, fire department.
No burn permits in May or June, oh, I'm sorry, in, in May so far.
Yeah.
Wow.
Kind of slow on the burn permits, so.
Oh, yeah, these are April reports.
Oh, okay, awesome.
Because May's not done.
That makes sense, yeah. It would just get rained on right now if you tried to burn anything. No crime in May.
Good job, chief. And low crime in April.
Yeah, very, very good numbers.
Chief, we'll have more officers on the street probably this summer, right?
Uh, some taking vacation while some transitioning over from SRO.
More radar guns.
But as far as everybody you're listening, more cops in the streets as we're going to have.
Radar gun will be there.
Meals on Wheels is still hurting, if anybody has an opportunity to volunteer with them.
So they will be our guest speaker at the Smith County Peace Office Association in July.
Excellent.
But it'll be the Smith County Meals on Wheels. And Tim back there, myself, and John Moore sponsoring that, because we want to get more awareness for that group.
Excellent, yeah, thank you for that.
Speaking of awareness, Keep White House Beautiful is in very big need of volunteers, big time.
I saw somebody putting stuff out at the, the sign on one ten, they're putting like bulch out. It's a sign at one ten in Grand.
The welcome sign. You got some new foliage out there.
Yeah, it looks nice.
Yeah. They're, they're needing, they're needing volunteers.
All right, that's the numbers, council. Any questions on the KPIs? All right, you had a financial statement also included in your packet. Any questions on that? All right, hearing none, that takes us to I executive session, which we had none, so we won't need to J reconvene into regular session. That takes us to item K. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Anything else? All right, hearing none, all those in favor adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, stay here. The time is seven forty-nine. The time is seven forty-nine, and we are adjourned.